We need to ask for a motion to seal the executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, our next order of business is the consent agenda. And those are all items listed with an asterisk and considered to be routine by the school committee and are enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a committee member requests, in which event the items are withdrawn from the general order of business and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. And so before we get to the consent agenda, which includes personnel, John, you will need to read that recommendation with subsection F, which is administrative contracts, vote aye.
Recommend, recommend. Oh yes. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion? Just to clarify, does everyone understand? So it's the consent agenda without F, okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S 2019-48, personnel. Recommendation subsection F. Move to approve.
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Recommendation S 2019-49, that the school committee found the recommendation of superintendent is supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee approved the second meeting of the off-campus learning policy.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? I was just gonna ask Mrs. Anna to clarify. I think we discussed some edits during the last school set committee, and I assume you see those, or I perhaps saw you see those edits.
Correct. After the first reading, we were asked to add the steps for the appeal process, and then we've added that in. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you. I know that I was the one that raised adding that at the last meeting, and I'm very pleased with the detail with which the appeal process is laid out for the new policy. And I think it provides not only good guidance for people who are working their way through this policy, but also guidance for how we might be able to look at appeal policies and other progressive evaluation policies going forward. Thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S 2019-50, that the school committee found the recommendation of superintendent is supported by the policy and curriculum subcommittee and the budget facility subcommittee approved the first reading of the food services account policy.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to let everybody know that this particular policy was a small one that was connected to some of our food service issues. It laid out specifically was over how we had as a policy listed that when children had overdrawn accounts, that they would receive a different lunch. We've amended that, and now it reads that any child that has an overdrawn account will receive the same lunch as other children.
I just have a comment. From the way we used to do it, I believe our bill was $300 at the end of the year. Once we had a discussion about it last year, our bill jumped up to $3,000 a year. People aren't paying for their children to have lunch, and I don't think that that's appropriate, so I vote no.
We made this change based on, we felt that the values of our district needed to reflect this, and I do know that there is a part of the policy that we edited goes over how we continue to.
No, no, I read it, but I'm... I know how hard this district works to make sure that all the children get lunch, and our employees work hard behind the scenes. And I also know that when we make a jump from $300 to $3,000, it's because people just aren't paying, and I have a problem with that when they can afford to pay. And that's my problem. It's just something that I take offense at. If I'm taking care of my children, then I'm taking care of my children, and I'm feeding them, or I'm letting someone know that I can't feed them and I need help. And I also know that we reach out as a district and we say to people, "Do you need help?" So I just think that we ought to continue that service as opposed to where we are now. And that it's really a personal decision, and I know I'm the only one sitting here who could vote no, I think maybe not, but I'm gonna vote no.
So I'm just gonna say something really quick. I asked to have this policy put back on. I think certain members knew where I stood on this last go-around, and I think for many of us on the policy subcommittee at least, and we'll see what happens tonight, it was more an issue of children paying for the sins of their parents, and so that's sort of where we came to where we're at. Having said, is there any other discussion or questions on this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Recommendation S 2019-51, the school committee found the recommendation of superintendent is supported by the budget facility subcommittee approved your athletic fields drainage phase three bid.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I think I know what you're gonna ask. So I might need George to come up and give us a little bit of background, but I'll give my best. When we went out for bid, we got... We asked that we have options for phase three. As everybody knows, phase three includes the softball field. Is it the north side?
Yes.
Is it the north side? But we also wanted options with what to do with...
The hammer.
The hammer cage. It also supports disc, as I believe. And so the bid that came back, it was from one company bid, and it was the complete bid. And so any options that were to be discussed were counted as credits. So if we didn't want the softball field and we wanted something else, it was one price. If we wanted the softball field, but we wanted to keep the hammer cage where it currently is, it was, again, it was a credit, so you're taking something off. If you wanted to disassemble the hammer throw cage and keep the softball, it was another credit. At the subcommittee meeting, the decision was made, if I correct me if I'm wrong, to go with the full bid, which includes a softball field, and moving the hammer throw from Naomi Street to just outside the outfield. And the decision was made to do that, and the athletic director provided some good insight that we really do need that hammer throw cage if we want to participate and hold any track and field events. We've also, I think it was Par Engineering has also decided that where we can locate that hammer throw cage still meets the minimum regulation for softball field and the distance from home plate to the outfield. So it is still gonna be a softball field that is regulation, but we also are now going to have our hammer throw and discus cage so that we can host events. And I think we can host invitationals, perhaps. Is that correct? It's one, we can host an event against one or two other schools, but not multiple, but that's a different issue, because of the track. Right?
Dual means.
Dual means, dual means, that's right. So that is currently the recommendation on the table.
Any other questions?
Did I miss anything, George?
Ms. Ellsworth?
No.
Mr. Simmons, can we just make sure that the town knows what we're doing, the town of ourself and neighbors, so we don't get in the Naomi Street and the chief of police and the fire marshal don't want them?
I will make sure I reach out.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I was just gonna say, if you noticed in the paper the other day, a young man from Barrington threw the hammer 190 feet. And I have a problem with the hammer cage in the middle of athletic fields. So I firmly believe that if we're not going to have it on Naomi Street, then we should remove it altogether, because I don't, I think it's more... And as the wife of a college hammer thrower for four years, so I have some experience in the hammer, I think it should be removed altogether. So that would be my recommendation, but I don't think it's safe to be in the middle of playing fields. I just don't, it's in wide open space that people can run across. I was at Bryant University this weekend for a lacrosse game and saw all their hammer cages, and they were at the farthest end of the field at Bryant, the Bryant University Fields, than anything could be. We were way down the corner, but that's where they are. And by moving it up there, I'm just, I'm really worried about its exposure to children hanging on it when it's there, out in the open field, and all of the other issues that we talked about earlier in terms of the possibility of physical harm, even when we're not having to meet with just the nets there. So I believe that as much as I'd love to have a hammer cage, I think that that is absolutely the wrong place to put it. So while I'm excited that I'm having the softball field and I'm excited that we're finally through with phase three, and I'm going to make sure that it goes through, I really think that you need to rethink about that hammer cage.
Any other questions? Mr. Benford?
Mr. Simmons, what is the max distance that we look at for the safety bounds of that hammer throw? Is it beyond 190? Do you know?
Well, unfortunately, they're on concrete regulations, as the athletic director will attest to. It's not concrete regulations as to far as distance is concerned. We took the concerns about its current location and distance, and really, if we're gonna have this hammer throw, this is the only location that we could have it where it would meet those minimum requirements that the athletic director and the Veracose Scholastically suggest. There's nothing in concrete in writing that's gonna follow.
Yeah, and shame on me not to actually know, because I know we've been through it before, but I was just thinking, what length does it go before it does hit the practice field?
As soon as it comes out of the cage, doesn't it hit the practice field?
No. Because of the way the cage is designed, and this was part of the special U.S. current location, because of the way the cage is designed, you are kind of restricted to direction. And with this new location, we've gained roughly about 30 to 40 feet more than what we had as current.
George, I think his question was, at what point, when the hammer comes out of the cage, does it touch a playing field?
It would have to, it would have to go roughly about 180 to 190 feet.
In order to touch a playing field?
Yes.
Of any sort, even the practice ones that we have out there?
The only field that would affect is the practice field for football.
Okay.
It would catch them.
The what?
The back of the field. So the full... The fully netted part in which you can't throw a hammer or a disc.
Right.
Through.
Right.
Is to the back of the new football field. So you'd be throwing...
Towards the school.
Be throwing towards the school.
Good question, John.
Apparently, so I'll wait for them to go this way. No, we were just having a discussion as far as trajectory is concerned. And to larger's concern, that yes, there is a chance that if they throw it far enough, they would catch the corner of the football field, but in our conversations, the events don't happen at the same time.
Yeah, and I guess that was my next question. Both potential damage to the field, you know, as far as footwork with the football players, the sprinkler system, and then of course, the other piece is the safety and how we quarter off that area when the event goes on to make sure there's nobody going through there once the hammer starts going.
Yeah, we had all of those conversations. We took all of that into account when our engineering design.
Okay, and the Naomi Street group, they've already been notified?
Not to my knowledge, because it hasn't been approved. Once it's approved, then I'm not sure how to reach out to them, but I'll get some information I may have to reach out.
Yeah, just be back, okay.
Manager?
Yes.
So the recommendation that's on the board, can we make it with the recommendation that we talked to the towns? Because it doesn't sound like we did that, right, George?
We haven't yet because it hasn't been approved. You can make a motion to amend.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question, because I feel like we're all sort of looking at each other. Every time a hammer throw comes up, we're discussions aren't ours. So I just wanna be clear. So I could just kind of ask, Brian, if we vote in favor of this recommendation, is that hammer throw going what we're talking about tonight?
Yes.
That's this recommendation, is that placement of the hammer throw?
This recommendation that you have before you is to put the hammer throw cage into the northeast section of the property.
So if anyone here has concerns about that location for the hammer throw cage, they would not want to vote in favor of this recommendation? Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's, everybody's clear on that. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table this recommendation with the direction to the administration to run this proposal by the towns and Naomi Street and report back with their hopeful, enthusiastic approval. Where, so at least that we're not in the same boat that we were in last time around, where we were blind, somewhat blindsided, I suppose, by the level of response you've got.
Do you think we could vote on it so they can get started on the bid because of the time of the year, with the understanding that before they start, they meet with the town, so that we could move this along? Would that be okay instead of tabling it?
I understand from Mr. Simmons that voting in favor of it means the hammer throw cage goes in that spot. I think there may be people who have questions about the safety going in that spot.
Yeah, I have a question about the safety going in that spot, but I have a bigger question about getting...
Wait, Brian's gotta make the motion you're gonna vote against.
Move to suspend the policy that the meetings end at 10 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Is there a concern, George, that if they don't get started on the project, at least digging and the excavating and whatever it is that they're going to do, that they're not gonna be done in time if we don't get started now? So that was my concern about, could we not table it, but go to the town for their input while we get started?
So...
Sure.
I move that we amend the original motion to include a provision that no work happens on the movement of the hammer throw cage until we have received feedback from the towns and the Naomi Street residents. Favorable feedback, right? Favorable feedback, yes. So the discussion on this would be that I believe we could go forward with the phase three work, but that any hammer throw cage movements or considerations about placement be on hold until we receive favorable input from the town and the residents. Does that make sense to everybody?
Well, I have a question in that case. So there is other work that you can get started on, and then perhaps find out that this hammer throw cage is gonna go somewhere else, or nowhere, and that work continues? I'm asking you basically, does it make more sense to table this or to make this amendment and move along with other parts of this job? Or are they all, do they all...
My personal opinion is that we not table it and that we move forward with the project. You know, pending the, I would assume you would want me to speak to the town administrator and to the police chief, and to reach out to Naomi parents. I'm pretty confident that they'll be happy to hear that it's being moved. But yeah, I would suggest not tabling it if in fact this is something that we want because of the timing of it all.
Mr. Powell?
We had the county administrator here one day discussing this, is that not true? We had the Naomi Street people here, is that not true? And we're both of those groups in favor of moving the cage.
Yes, they were.
So I don't know why we're putting this amendment. I'm gonna vote against this amendment, because I think we should move on this project, and I think we should get that cage out of there as quickly as possible, because the people, the instrumental people, you're gonna talk to them, have always said, hey, why don't you move it?
I don't, I just don't feel assured that it's moving to the, that it's safe, that it's exceptionally safe in the new spot that's being proposed. I'm not, I'm not feeling assured that that's...
I don't know if it helps everyone make their decision, but just know that with this relocation, it's the only location other than where it's at currently. So the way I view it is the possibility of not having it at all, but moving it, this is the only location where it fits.
Could I just also add, well, it's that we'll give up the girls' softball field.
Correct.
All right. The other thing is, I know that the personal town manager and some representation from the Naomi group there were at the subcommittee budget, so I'm fairly certain this is not gonna be an issue on that side, but it still doesn't hurt to officially go out and get their approval. And I wouldn't mind looking again at the safety, although I feel pretty confident that it's still a good decision. So, you know, with Brian's recommendation as amended, I think that's strong.
And while all of the safety concerns are absolutely warranted, I get it, I understand, throughout all of this process, I've learned a ton of stuff about hammer throw that I never knew.
It's exciting.
But I will tell you this, as a benefit to our kids, it's phenomenal. I truly would not be up here telling you that we should move forward with it if I didn't believe it myself, but after doing the research, it's gonna benefit these kids immensely. You can't even describe how much.
I think just talking to Christie, we were talking about scholarships that were many tens of thousands for several students, and it'll only grow from there.
And it's awesome, yes. Sure. I can tell you this, my grandchildren will be throwing the hammer. I missed a couple of my own kids, but that's the next generation.
Thank you, George. Does anyone else have any questions or comments, or can we vote aye on the amendment? I'll say aye. Okay, so we're voting aye on the amendment to move forward with the caveat that Dorit will top of the town and the police chief, et cetera. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Recommend?
Go on the main motion.
Okay. Did we already, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, that was really quick.
Recommendation S 2019-52, that the school committee found the recommendation of superintendent is supported by the budget facility subcommittee approved the school lunch program contract.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Peller to give us an overview of the, I believe there are changes to the school lunch contract.
So historically, the East Bay districts have gone out as a collective unit or an RFP. And I would say since I committed in Rhode Island districts, I was in another East Bay district, we have historically gone with our current vendor. That current vendor has now, has won the state midlist, so it is easier for us to jump on the state midlist. There's no break in service, we still have the same staff, and actually, we will have lower fees if we jump on the state midlist. I mean, it's actually the state contract, excuse me.
Any questions, Mr. Ramus?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand. There are some districts in the state that are under a state contract, there are some districts in the state that are under separate contracts from the state contract. Historically, we've been one of those separate contract districts, and now we're, the current proposed contract is to move to be another signatory to the state contract?
You, the state recommends the state contracts, same would be true with transportation. Collectively, the East Bay districts were able to secure lower rates by going out to bid, but collectively, we got together and analyzed the state contract, and it is much lower fees to go with the state contract, so that's why we're proposing to do that. If in the future that doesn't work out, we would come back to the committee and ask collectively again, the East Bay districts to go out for an RFP in future years.
Is it an annual contract, or is it a longer term?
State contracts, I think they would be the same as three years with an option to renew. Three and two, and, but if there is, for any reason that you feel, whether it's transportation or school lunch, that you can secure lower fees by doing something different, you can petition the state to go in a different direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S 2019-53, the school committee found the recommendation of superintendent is supported by the budget facility subcommittee approved assignment of the fund balance amount to be determined.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
So...
Mr. Ramus?
Yes, so at this point, every year, we are mandated by law to assign our fund balance for this fiscal year, fiscal year 19. Currently, the recommendation is to, as it years past, to assign this fund balance to capital projects. That is the recommendation again this year, but knowing that at any point after July 1st, we can revisit that fund balance and its assignment to capital and redirect it where this body so chooses.
Mr. Ramus?
Is it always when we make this recommendation at this time of year that the amount is to be determined?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, because it's at this point on Naomi.
And what is the process for reallocating fund balance to a different destination if we so choose?
I believe that we'll have discussions at subcommittee, so the committee will recommend to full committee the reassignment of fund balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S 2019-... Recommendation S. 2019-54, that the school committee fund recommendation superintendent is supported by the budget facility subcommittee approve fiscal year 20 preliminary budget.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So the budget that we are presenting this evening is the original recommendation of the administration with a couple of caveats. We have, with the passage in the House of the Governor's Budget, we have been given an additional $69,000 in regional transportation adjustment. And then, again, so two changes from the original, the original proposed budget by the administration. The second is to move the athletic director from a half FTE to an 11-month position. At the end of the day, when we look at the balance that these cuts and that this budget produces, we will have a balance of $69,078, which is exactly what was, additional monies were given to us for the regional transportation adjustment. It is recommended by the budget facility subcommittee that that $69,000 excess revenue be applied to our connections classroom support. We had discussion earlier in subcommittee that we currently are using a fund balance and a five-year get well plan, if you will, to establish and support our connections classrooms at KMS and HuCole and then throughout the district. So right now, it is recommended that this $69,000 go to offset some of those fund balance, and then we would look to adjust that going forward.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Thank you. So in the budget and facility subcommittee meeting, we actually made the motion to approve the proposed budget as it was set forth by the superintendent and the administration, pending the, looking at the other areas to subsidize the elimination of some of the teachers, meaning the in-schedule and math specialist at KMS and some of these other teachers. Raquel had talked about the grant carryover as a possibility and looking at other avenue sources for revenue to either charge these to if that's applicable or to find other ways to cut costs to make sure that we look at every avenue prior to reducing anybody's job or affecting any child's education.
Thank you for that clarification. I apologize for not mentioning that. By law, we are required to approve a preliminary budget by June 30th. We have until September 30th to present a balanced budget. And so, starting July 1st, the heavy lifting will begin, as Mrs. Ellsworth said, to look at all other avenues, grant carryover, maximizing use of fund balances and that sort of thing in order to, in order to reduce or perhaps eliminate some of the cuts to positions.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mrs. McBride?
We're required to give you a balanced budget on July 1st. And it came to our attention a couple of years ago that we couldn't quite do that because the monies that come in from the federal government and the state government don't come in until September. So nobody got to find out how much monies came in. Sometimes it was a lot more money than we anticipated, and sometimes it was less than we anticipated. So we elected to change our schedule a bit and make this budget in July 1st. In theory, the budget, and then report out in September, the whatever changes were made to the state budget or the federal budget or our medical costs, things that came in over the summer that we couldn't possibly know on July 1st. And in fact, there are several things that do come in. So that in September, in transparency, everybody gets to find out exactly how much money did come in from the state and the federal government. And that's how we've done it. So I'm just going to say that I'm going to vote for the budget. And in September, you will see the budgets, the rest of the funds that come from the state and the federal government, but because we're using fund balance for these supports at K commu and HuCole and hopefully throughout the district. In this instance, it's my opinion that any extra money that we get should go towards paying that off first because we have to have a payout plan over five years or we're in a structural deficit. So I can vote for this budget, knowing that any extra money that comes in will go to pay that down. And that's the only reason I can vote this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Vento?
Just a quick comment. Just like to thank Dr. Andrew and Raquel and the rest of your staff. I note the long hours of work that you put in and on the weekends and everything that you've done and knowing that we'll still continue to do that as we massage this home. So thank you.
Mr. Ramos?
So this is a very difficult vote to make because it definitely signals that if nothing changes, that there are going to be cuts that can be made that are not going to be cuts that any of us would like to make. I think. At least I would like to make. And I also want to at least express my opinion that although the statements by Mr. Bradshaw and Ms. Ellsworth about continuing to, you know, look under every nook and cranny and the statements that were made at the budget subcommittee meeting tonight about, you know, wanting to hear from all constituencies about other areas where we might be able to make some changes are genuine and that those efforts will be undertaken and everything that we hear will be considered seriously. It's a monumental task to come up with the amount of money that would need to be found either through revenue sources or through other, you know, adjustments made to spending here and there in order to store all the things that all of us would like to have kept. And I know that although some of the description of the heavy lifting beginning after July 1st is true and fair, that there has been a lot of work done to try to identify what the best options are already. And we will look at things in as thorough a manner as we can. But we also have to remember that some of the things that we're talking about cutting are things that can't be reversed unless they're done in very short order. The planning for the next school year is already well underway, and we can't find money for an eight-period block schedule on August 31st and then implement it at the high school on September 4th or 5th. So I would like to reiterate that we will be doing everything we can to continue to look at the budget. And in fact, the budget is always something where one dollars are allocated to a specific area. If circumstances or priorities change, we have the ability to reallocate funds to different places. The budget that we're approving tonight is for the bottom line dollars that the joint finance committee allocated to us. There's currently a structure within that budget for how those dollars will be spent. We do have the ability to change the way in which we allocate that if we've come up with a good way to do that. But it is not something that is going to be done. There's no guarantee, I guess, that that's something that we're going to be able to do. And the work that needs to be done to get there, some of the things that we would wish to restore has to happen very quickly or else we are going to be moving forward. And unfortunately, it's a budget climate that we are in and that we are not the only ones that are in. As many people may have seen, there were much more substantial cuts made, in particular in Warwick. And funding is a problem. Funding is something that is, you know, a push and pull between the state government and the local governments. And the desire to speak the rhetoric about putting their dollars behind education and children being our most important resources is not always backed up by the action and the political will to bring that about. And the only potential silver lining from circumstances where difficult cuts are made is that it provides a potential, another weapon in our arsenal to advocate with those who are making the funding decisions as opposed to those that are making the spending decisions as to why the money that we're asking for is really necessary and to demonstrate the detrimental impacts that it will have if the continued direction of reducing funding continues. So I'm going to vote in favor of this budget. I intend to work as hard as I can to figure out if there are other ways to do things, but I don't want to give a sense of false hope that there's going to be some magic bullet that we find. We'll do everything we can to find what we can. But where we sit right now, there are potential areas where we might have some money here, some money there. But there isn't currently a clear path to restoring all the funding that we all wish that we could, all the programs that we all wish that we could restore funding to.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Sorry, anyone else?
Just one second.
Pardon? Hello, sir. Okay, so we can move. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now we'll do the subcommittee points. Policy curriculum.
Thank you. Let me see. I'm trying to remember what our next meeting is scheduled because we've managed to, we normally cancel the July meeting based on all the activities going on in town around the Oliver Building.
This will be August 5th.
August 5th, wonderful. Thank you. August 5th. Anybody is welcome to join. We are continuing to move forward on code of conduct and discipline, figuring out a way to attack that. We have a meeting later this week to sort of discuss how we're going to be moving forward. That's kind of the highlights with that subcommittee. Thank you.
Next, we have budget and facilities subcommittee.
The next budget and facilities subcommittee is actually going to switch a little bit. It will not be on the third Monday of July. It will actually be on the 4th. On the 22nd of July, we will continue to discuss our Phase 3 projects. We'll continue to discuss our FY '20 budget and the progress that we've made there.
Okay.
All are welcome.
Personnel and contract negotiations?
We don't currently have any meetings scheduled. I anticipate that we will be having some meetings in July to discuss some upcoming personnel and contract negotiation business. And we hope to be of support to the budget facilities subcommittee meeting, budget facilities subcommittee, and helping to evaluate the potential options related to their work going forward. But keep your eyes open. We'll post those meetings and then make sure that everybody knows about them as soon as they're scheduled.
And wellness?
Let's see. Wellness, again, we haven't scheduled any meetings for our subcommittee yet. We're going to be pulling our members shortly and trying to get something in place in the latter part by the summer. We are working on with heads, trying to have a community response with wellness fair, hopefully, in early September. We also pushed our wellness subcommittee policy toward the policy curriculum subcommittee, and it is sort of going through that. We're making edits and going to present it to the full subcommittee, hopefully, by the next month.
Thank you, Carly. And lastly, before we get a motion to adjourn, I need to inform the public of something, and I ask that everyone please be extremely respectful in receiving the news. And I just want to say that we did receive the resignation of our superintendent, and he's been with us for 10 years, first as assistant superintendent and then as superintendent for the last almost five. We wish him well in all your endeavors, Julian. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?